Good evening. It is 6:30 on the 8th of August, 2023. We have a full dice. I'm calling this city council meeting to order. We are very honored to have two young ladies here from the Bastrop Opera House Youth Academy. We have Lucy McGinnis and Ava Yanee. Would y'all, young ladies, please step forward? They're gonna be lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Will y'all please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of Texas, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Let's give these young ladies a round of applause. Stay there, he's gonna take y'all's picture real quick. Thank y'all, thank y'all. Now we're gonna have Pastor Phil Woods come up and lead us in invocation. If you'd please stand again.
Father, we thank you for this day. We ask your blessings upon the city council tonight as they go through the agenda that is before them. Lord, we pray for each one of our departments throughout our city. Lord, our police and firemen, as they at times have to make split-section decisions. Lord, in this heat, we just pray your protection over them. And Lord, tonight, we just pray that you send rain our way. We need it so terribly bad. And Lord, we just give you praise and thanksgiving for all your many blessings that you have brought to our area. And Lord, we just ask for that wisdom from above as decisions are made tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Y'all may be seated. Do a real quick mayor's report. Since we last met, council on the 25th, there've been some activities that have occurred we should let people know about. On the 26th, we held our boards and commissions fair. Thanks for all who attended and thanks to our city staff and current board and commission members who set this up and provided the appropriate information. And then later on that night, on the 26th, 26th was extremely busy. Our city manager gave a presentation of Let's Talk Streets. She provided an overview of our current street conditions and options to bring them up to a better condition. This presentation was repeated on August 2nd. It was live streamed and is available to see online. Extremely informative. On August 2nd, council toured the new wastewater treatment plant to see what progress had been made as well as receiving a education in the process. Very informative. On August 3rd, a workshop was held here in council chambers to discuss the Parks and Recreation Master Plan that council will consider accepting later this evening. Then from Tuesday, the 1st through Saturday, the 5th, we celebrated Bastrop's Homecoming and Rodeo. From team roping, barrel racing, and mutton busting to carnival games, Bastrop's own Peterson Brothers, a high time was had by all. Congratulations to all the contestants and winners. A huge thank you goes to the sponsors, volunteers, and attendees who all contributed to this great community event. And now I want to call everybody's attention. This weekend is the Bastrop County Health Fair. Y'all may have received this in the mail or have some notice of it. It's gonna be held this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. right over there at the convention center. It should be a very informative program. Check on some council reports. Councilmember Crouch? Yes?
You would call me first.
Yes.
I did a lot of the same things that you did. So I actually asked for the wastewater treatment plant tour and then I couldn't go to it. So I apologize for having everybody go there and look at it, but I'm glad everybody got to go to it. It's kinda hard to get excited about a wastewater treatment plant until you go look at what we've got and what we've paid almost $50 million for, I think. So we went to the parade, got the ride in the homecoming parade, and went to the, one night of the rodeo, which was, I went to the Wednesday night. And so it was still crowded, but great, great event for that. I went to the street maintenance, public forums, both of them. And I hope that everybody's got a lot of information on the condition of the streets here now. So I think that'll be a good discussion going forward. The board and commission fair, and that's it.
Thank you, sir.
I wanted to thank everybody for coming. I know you're all here for the rodeo. And it's great to see this much public support for a venue and for an event. And good timing, right after homecoming. But it's really good to see this much support for a venue. So thank you for coming out.
Thank you, sir. I'm waiting. Is there another encore? All good. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Bastrop. So I attended the planning and zoning meeting and both street maintenance forums. I was out of town quite a bit the last two weeks, so didn't get to do much. But one of the things that I did get to do that I wanted to talk about was I got invited to an event in Austin with an organization called ACISWOW. And they're a volunteer organization. They were winning the Presidential Award for logging over 4,000 hours in volunteer time. And the organization focuses on youth and them going to different cities and volunteering their time, no cost to them or to us, whoever's using them. But that's their sole focus. They have a higher organization before them. And I guess the way it kinda works is the more volunteer hours they get, the more funding they receive for their location in Austin. And so they log more than 4,000 hours. They invited city council members from all over. There were council members there from Elgin. There were council members there from Round Rock. And there were council members there from Kyle, I believe. Two of the recent volunteerism efforts that they did was they helped Kyle clean the Blanco River. They cleaned the river. They had over 100 volunteers from the organization go. They helped the city clean the river, remove graffiti from the river, and fed city employees. And then another recent one that they did was in Maynor, they removed invasive grass. They went to, they sent 100 volunteers or more to Maynor and they did a project there to remove grass. So they're very, very eager to partner with cities and help with efforts where volunteers are needed. And that is certainly the case in Bastrop. I see groups all the time asking for volunteers. They are primarily focused on environmental. However, they also have helped with food pantries. They have offered to feed Bastrop city staff just to introduce themselves to the city of Bastrop. Parks, talking about parks, they will come and help us clean our parks. They will come and help our public work staff do, have more bodies to clean parks. Because there's only so much they can do and only so many bodies that we have. All they want is to ask. So I plan on connecting that organization with multiple groups in the community as well as our mayor and city manager because they don't want anything in return, which is very, very rare. They just wanna be able to go everywhere they can and help communities have a more environmental-friendly atmosphere. So I'll be getting with council and other groups on them. And that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate the organizers of the homecoming. It was a great weekend. I never get a chance to go to any of those things because I'm always working. Because when y'all bring a lot of people to town, y'all make me go to work. So, but I appreciate it and I heard nothing but good things from the people who did attend and then came to our places before or after. And appreciate city manager for putting on the great information sessions for the streets. And I think that's a major deal and glad that we're making progress on that one as well. That's all, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Paul Tim Kirkland?
Thank you, Mayor. I took great joy in attending my very first rodeo on Friday night. And then I took great joy on Saturday, walking around saying, "This ain't my first rodeo." But I will comment that only having gone to one prior rodeo, that's a very small bar to claim that you're an expert at something. But even, so I found myself on the second day explaining to other newbies, you know, what was coming next, like what is bulldogging, for instance, you know? So a great time was had by my family and by everyone I was with. So I just wanna say thank you to everyone that made that happen. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you, Mayor. I also attended all the events that the mayor talked about. But I wanna donate my time to talk about you and what this town has done. I wanna recognize Pastor Roland Nava. He just got out of the hospital today. And he had a fantastic fan drive for the community a couple of weeks ago. Where many, many fans and food were passed out to the community. So I wanna thank Pastor Nava and the volunteers. And also, I wanna thank all of you here tonight for coming and being passionate about your community. I wanna thank the Bastrop Homecoming and Rodeo Committee for the countless hours. I was on that committee many years ago, so I know what goes into it. And I know they need a lot more volunteers, too. So I would advocate for everyone to help them out because according to Betty Rucker, I think this was about one of the best rodeos and homecomings we've had. And I can attest to that because I went to all of it and it was amazing. So thank you all for being here and thanks to the community.
Thank you, ma'am. We have no work sessions or briefings, no staff and board reports. I have a single citizen comment under the open citizen comment. Bethany Young? Please. Just state your name and address and you'll have three minutes.
My name's Bethany Young and I live, I'm gonna have to pronounce my street name, but I live in Tishan Village, so get ready. It's 1-880-WAPA-HO-HO Drive in Bastrop.
Well, I certainly can't correct you, so...
All right. Well, thank y'all, councilmembers. I wanna address, it's kinda controversial. It's the signage permit that was given out in June to an organization whose self-stated purpose is, quote, "to share information on how to access safe abortion pills in any state," unquote. The abortion pills that these signs were promoting work like this. First, they kill a child in the womb by cutting off their blood flow and access to nutrients. If you don't wanna trust me, Planned Parenthood describes it this way, quote, "Pregnancy needs a hormone called progesterone to grow normally. Mifepristin blocks your body's own progesterone, which stops the pregnancy from growing," unquote. You'll notice that Planned Parenthood's very strategic use of the words pregnancy instead of child and "stop from growing" instead of "kill in the life of." The next step in this process is early labor is brought on and the dead child is delivered. The body is usually flushed down a toilet like the waste that a lot of people apparently think preborn children are. These pills that were advocated by public signs, which were given a permit by the city, they're used by mothers, they're used by abusive fathers and grandparents, they're used by abusive pimps to kill children because that child is seen as inconvenient. I urge you to repent of ever allowing that promotion of violence and to make the promotion of violence toward anyone, whether it's, you know, through the traditional means or through by abortion, not legal in our city. I imagine that, I know myself, I imagine councilmembers or anyone in this room has probably been seen inconvenient or unwanted at some point in time, even by someone close, even perhaps by a parent. But I'm willing to bet that if a permit was requested to call for the ending of our lives or promote that in any way, it would never have gotten a permit. In fact, I'd be willing to bet that police may have even been involved because we're seen as people, real human people who have rights. I am just urging you to see children in the womb, just like you see us, just like the people that they are, and give them the same protection. So please, I urge you, put something forward to make sure those signs don't ever go up again in the city.
Thank you, ma'am. I recognize we're all passionate about things, but this is a business meeting. And so applause, cheering, booing cannot be allowed, but I appreciate your passion. Council, I'm gonna make a couple of corrections on our agenda. First of all, Agenda Item 9G is being pulled awaiting a corrected staff report. And I'm going to move up Item 9D because that's what the majority of people here to be a part of. And we appreciate y'all being here. 9D, consider action to approve Resolution Number R-2023-121, formally accepting the 2023 City of Bastrop Parks Recreation Open Space Master Plan. Ms. Moore, and prior to you speaking, Ms. Moore, I kinda wanted to provide a little clarity. There is no intention at all by this council, no plans by this council, no consideration of this council to do away with the rodeo grounds. As a matter of fact, we're discussing budgeting monies to make some improvements out there. We're working on several different avenues to get greater utilization out of the rodeo grounds. So to assuage some of y'all's fears, and I wanted to use the term assuage because I just learned what it means, that we do have no intention, no plans or anything to tear down the rodeo grounds or replace it with soccer fields. It just ain't gonna happen with this council. With that, Ms. Moore, if you wanna give your quick presentation for we...
Thank you. Yes, my name's Terry Moore. I am the Recreation Manager here at the city. And I will tell you that it is a joy. And I have been part of working on this master plan since January. You guys know that. And it has been interesting and exciting and we know that our work's just about to get started. The master plan is a working, living guide document. That's what it is about. I'm excited that it gives us a planning opportunity, someplace to look in implementation steps of moving forward to build the robust and exciting recreation and parks program here in the city. I do wanna introduce to you Mark Malano. He's with StanTech. He is the consultant that is, has been leading this project with us. He's been great to work with. He does a great presentation and I'm gonna hand the floor. I'm gonna get out of the way.
Thank you, Terry. Mayor, council, thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to provide an update on the Parks Master Plan, Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I'll be presenting a very similar presentation as y'all saw previously, but also allow for any clarification, questions you guys might have. But as you guys know, this journey has been nothing but wonderful in regards to really seeing what the city of Bastrop has as parks and recreation in their current inventory, but also identifying what the opportunities for improvement may be. So one of the very first questions that we wanted to clarify was, well, why even do a Parks Master Plan, you know, and what's the intention behind it? You know, so this plan really serves a variety of purposes and it has a different reasons behind it. But more importantly, its primary functions are really to analyze the existing inventory of the Parks Recreation System, but also to identify the needs and deficiencies in the system. You know, we determine a series of goals, general recommendations, and possible strategies for improving the system. You know, like Terry mentioned, it is intended to be a living, flexible document that's long-range, that should be updated frequently. You know, it should be used to guide decisions, to help think about strategy of future implementation, future growth, and how you can be prepared to bring on new elements and amenities onto the current system. More importantly, it's a great document that helps assist and fund some of these projects by applying to grants. You know, Texas Parks and Wildlife themselves like to see these plans adopted by municipalities so that they can, so you guys can apply to some of the grants, you know, and grant opportunities, which I'll elaborate a little bit in further detail shortly. So when we talk about the process and what we've done over the last eight or nine months, you know, we started with an inventory analysis and due diligence on where the current plan exists and what the park system is currently like. But a big component of this project was to listen to the community and do some public outreach and stakeholder outreach to really understand what the needs and the demand from this community is. So with that, and again, today's presentation's more of an executive summary. I do invite everybody to read the actual plan, which is in much more detail. But, so, one of the things I wanted to say congratulations on was we received over 1,000 elements of engagement from the community. This involves survey participation, the virtual idea wall, the MAP-IT exercises, the pop-up events that we had throughout the community. And to receive that much outreach in general is just such a good support of where the passion lies for the community and how they want increased quality of life and increased amenities throughout the overall community. But in that, we were able to find some needs and some top key themes that really kinda stood out. And for some of these, you know, again, it goes into much more detail in the plan, but we were able to identify that the community wants more water recreation, more swimming pools, a recreation center, a community center of some sort, more sports fields, more trails, more shaded areas, if you will. We also identified some gaps. You know, it's believed right now that the city of Bastrop's not really meeting the demand or the quality of service for athletic facilities and overall facilities of athletic nature, like soccer fields, baseball fields, football fields, et cetera. Also, recreation was falling a little bit short, where the recreation opportunities felt like they weren't really meeting the demand of the community. The other thing that we heard was that there were some specific needs that were called out. You know, there's opportunities to have more interaction with Colorado River, to bring people to nature, nature to people, but to potentially look at a sports complex and a recreation center, you know, where the community feels like these are elements that should be in existence right now. And then overall, we heard a lot about connectivity and mobility. So this includes sidewalks, ADA connectivity, access, and trails as well. So the other component that we started to look at was the, where do we want the future Parks and Recreation System to be? You know, and what service should it provide for the community? So out of all the community feedback and stakeholder engagement feedback that we received, we were able to develop a vision statement with the Parks Advisory Board and city staff to really kinda set the framework of why do what we do? Why expand the system and what do we want the system to be? So that vision states, envisioning the creation of a dynamic, all-inclusive parks, recreation, and trail system that will foster and support a deeper sense of community, promote overall health, as well as embrace the unique and historic natural environment of the Colorado River and the Lost Pines Forest. So that vision statement, again, is setting the framework for the why. Why expand the system, why improve the system, and really support the vision that was created by the community. So after that, we were able to develop these master plan goals, which I won't go into a whole lot of detail. But the overarching goals really expand a wide array of different services and elements. You know, everything from increased level of service, increased quality of life, increased recreation, to regional and local partnerships, expanding those relationships, expanding connectivity and improving it, you know, and identifying the funding and resources that will adopt a sustainable Parks and Recreation System with improvements, with added amenities to its system. So with that, we were able to come up with a variety of recommendations. You know, identifying the gaps, identifying the need from the community, and then looking at the natural resources that were available in the local context, we were able to develop some recommendations. And we call these recommendations the Big Six. So if you ask me, hey, Mark, so what does this really mean? We translate these to say, okay, guys, if you were gonna spend your effort and time and money, we really think that if you focus on these six categories, it would really move the needle and improve the overall Parks and Recreation System. So number one talks about funding. So develop sustainable and robust funding strategies to support the newly envisioned park system, including the development and improvement of parks and their maintenance and operational requirements. One of the things that we heard was that the community likes the existing park system and some of the existing parks, but they need to be maintained, they need to be upgraded, they need to have some kind of maintenance schedule, if you will. So identifying those funding sources was critical for this to be an implementation strategy and for it to be sustainable. So one thing that we've done in the plan, we have provided over 36 grant opportunities that you guys are eligible for based on your demographic, the community needs, and our recommendations. So those are gonna be a great starting point for you guys to start approaching some of those organizations for some funding opportunities on how you can improve the overall Parks and Recreation System. Number two is to improve existing parks, trails, and recreational facilities to support the newly envisioned system. Now, I do wanna preface that in these ideas and concepts, they're just ideas, they're just concepts. This was our way to show, hey, this is one way to do it. By no means do we say that this is the exact way or the only way to do that. But we gave some ideas of, okay, well, when we talk about unified signage, when we talk about wayfinding signage and branding the city park system, these are some concepts of what those signs may look like to tie everything together. You know, when we talk about Bob Bryant and some of the concepts that we showed for Bob Bryant, we showed updated playgrounds, we showed an enchanted forest and treehouse, updated playground areas, expanded parking areas, and a new community garden. You know, these are for conceptual purposes, only they're not intended to be a finalized site plan. In fact, we encourage you guys to, if you like some of these ideas or there is momentum behind some of these improvements, to reach out to the community, get some additional feedback, and start developing a finalized site plan that's specific to these parks. Now here are some, again, conceptual renderings of what some of those improvements may look like. More importantly, we wanted to use these renderings to really show how these different components start assembling together to improve the overall vision and the overall quality of service for some of these parks. For Fisherman's Park, we show the opportunity for waterside activities to include sand volleyball, a new and expanded boardwalk to allow some interaction to the water, improved walking trail system and improved connectivity throughout, and a potential amphitheater for educational and recreational opportunities. You know, talking about Mayfest, now on this one, we showed a gap in level of service in flat fields. So when we saw an opportunity to say, okay, well, if we were to incorporate four fields, where could that be? This park was used as one of those opportunity zones. Again, for conceptual purposes, we showed that in this particular instance, we could fit four soccer fields here with a parking area and improved concession stands, walking trail, and a playground, and what that may look like. Now, I will preface, and this is a little bit later in the presentation, but one of the scope items that we had under our purview was to do an economic study to see if it makes sense to do a sports facility, a sports complex, or a tournament facility. And if so, what are those facilities like? Should it be baseball, should it be soccer, and whatnot? So the plan itself in the appendix, it does go and provide that full economic study that shows that the city would benefit from providing a soccer complex of a minimum of four soccer fields. So looking at an opportunity of where those may be, we use Mayfest as a potential opportunity. Again, not to say that that's the only solution by any means. That's not what the intent was. And then lastly, when we look at Pecan Park, we provide a concept showing pedestrian pedestrian connectivity throughout the park, active and passive recreation, new playground, a open-air community pavilion, and then a series of river overlooks and how that may look like with the signage, the boardwalk, and again, connecting people to nature. So these concepts are really intended just for conceptual purposes, but to really show how those overarching goals and how the gaps identified could be met by doing something of this nature. And then lastly, Bridge Park, we looked at because this is an uncapitalized opportunity that could really be that pedestrian gateway that welcomes you into downtown. But for Bridge Park, we came up with a series of ideas that... But for Bridge Park, we came up with a series of ideas that include increased seating and shading, but also branding, a series of overlooks that, that could give these panoramic views, um, you know, but also some storytelling components that, that could be kind of the, the gateway into the city both during day and night. The big three out of the six talks about, uh, developing additional trails and trail connections. Um, and with this, we really want to conduct a feasibility study to, to really analyze the needs of, of trails and connectivity. And more than likely, this should be, uh, overlaid with the, uh, with the master transportation plan or a thorough plan, um, so that the two could kind of be talking to each other and in sync. Number four out of the big six really talks about recreational programming and the need to, to expand recreational programming from an educational standpoint, but also the recreational standpoint as well. But with this, um, one of the things that we're recommending is to do public surveys to make sure that the community is responding to what they want seen, what kind of programs they want to see, are they equally distributed throughout the city and are they providing seasonal interest throughout the entire year? Number five, we realized that there was a deficiency in parkland overall to, to meet the national standards and to provide that improved quality of life. So we, we provide that we identify and acquire land for new parks, recreation facilities, trails, open space and preservation areas. And with this, to be strategic of what parkland the city accepts and how they work with the private sector to identify some of these lands and opportunities to make it more of an amenity, not necessarily just this leftover space that's not maintained. And then lastly, number six, going back to what we heard, was the need for a community center or a need for a recreation center. So with this, we're, our recommendation is to conduct a feasibility study, uh, for the development of a new community, community recreation center, but then also start identifying some of those grants that could help identify funding sources for this to become a reality. That said, as I mentioned, one of the scope items that we looked at was the economic, um, feasibility for a sports complex or a sports venue that could be, uh, income producing. And with that, we looked at a variety of different, um, athletic types, facility types, and identified that in, in Bastrop and the region and given the existing inventory, there's a possibility to capture, uh, you know, over $11 million in revenue from, uh, a, a optimistic assumption of providing a soccer complex with a minimum of four fields. Now, again, that could be anywhere in the city and it was just identified as a potential, um, opportunity, but the need is definitely there. That said, you know, often these, these plans just kind of sit on a shelf and they're not flexible, they're not implementable, they're not, um, a living document. So we focused a lot of our efforts on the implementation strategies. So how do you bring this plan into reality? How do you move forward and elevate the existing park system? So with that, we would, we recommended a series of different strategies. But number one is that this plan should be a living document. It should be updated at a minimum every five years per Texas Parks and Wildlife, for sure, every 10 years. But it should, it should be used as a guiding document more than anything. You know, it needs to have that flexibility, but it should be used by all parties, not only council, not only city staff, but also the public at large to, to make sure that, that their needs are met and, and those ideas come to fruition, um, as desired. But one of the things that we did include was an implementation matrix that really outlines, okay, if you want to really, you know, focus on this action item, how do you, how do you do that? Who's responsible? How much is it going to cost and what are the steps that you, you get, uh, you need to take to get there? So with that, I encourage you guys to, to, um, really use this plan as is intended to be a guiding document, but a visionary document that can really help bring a lot of, uh, these components together to overall provide a better quality of life for the city and residents of Bastrop. So with that, I'll open up to any questions you may have or any, um, further discussion on any of these items.
Thank you, Mr. Maldonado. Uh, prior to opening up for Citizen Comment, do we have any question from council? Councilmember Meyer?
Yes, I do, and thank you for your presentation.
My pleasure.
I just need a little clarification because we're, we've made a statement, just a statement, that we do not want to remove the rodeo arena, but we just saw a picture that has four soccer fields. And I understand it's a concept and I get that, and it's, but this is a 10-year plan also. And I know one thing about things that are accepted and they're put on a shelf, we're not going to be here in 10 years. And somebody might pull that plan off the shelf and say, hey, they accepted the four soccer fields on 25 acres. So it is kind of a big deal, even though it's a concept and a living document, it is kind of a big deal to put that picture of four soccer field. It's kind of disingenuous to say, we don't, we don't want to remove the rodeo. Now my packet and also online has three plans. There's a concept A for Mayfest Park, a concept A, a concept B, and also the 2016 Mayfest Park and Rodeo Concept. So now we have three plans we're looking at. So it, it's pretty confusing, um, to put pictures out there that don't really align with what we're saying. So I just need clarification, like, um, why is it that way? Why do we have three plans and what is, so in 10 years, when we're not here, somebody can say, okay, let's pick the soccer fields now because they put it in there back in 2023? That, that's kind of what I need clarification on.
Absolutely. So, um, in our scope, we were, we were asked to provide concepts for five specific parks. And those parks were identified early on as the ones that we showed today. Um, now, when we did our discovery and when we did our standards analysis, demand analysis, gap analysis to identify, okay, where is the existing park system and where are the needs? We, we identified what those gaps were and then we looked at, okay, what makes sense given the information that we have today? Now, when we take that, that said, plus the, the community feedback that we received, given the stake, stakeholder engagement, the different pop-up events that we did, um, the online surveys and all the, the participation that we were able to track, we were, we were able to develop recommendations that connected those dots. So by saying, okay, well, if we know that there's a gap in providing sport fields and there's, the economic study shows that by providing a minimum of four sports fields, we would be able to capitalize on a market that has a need, then we looked at the feedback that we got and a lot of the feedback that we received, in fact, all, out of the 1,000 comments, only six times was the word rodeo, equestrian or mayfest mentioned in over 1,000 comments. So we saw that as an opportunity to say, okay, well, if this park has a higher and better use opportunity, this is one way where we can meet some of those gaps and where you guys wouldn't have to do another land acquisition and spend additional revenue to, to do that. Now that said, that's kind of where our logic and recommendations came from for, for the sports complex. Now, we also wanted to say, that's not the only option. Is there a higher and better use that doesn't go with the sports option? Because that's going to require a lot of capital to build. So is there another option that maybe doesn't pursue the sports complex? And that's where the secondary concept came in, where it was a little bit more retail friendly, but it was still, you know, kind of a mix of civic and open space, public realm improvements with a series of playgrounds, open spaces and trails, um, as a secondary concept. Um, so that's kind of where, where the, the two newer concepts came from. Um, that said, they're, they're just concepts and they're recommendations. Ultimately, it's up to the city and to council to implement how they want to see this plan implemented.
And I appreciate that. And just to make a note of, of the thousand people that responded to the survey, we have 11,800 roughly people in this town, in our community, in the city. This council represents 100% of those people. There's 88.2% of people that are not represented in that survey. I've had 100% of people contact me since this plan's been put up in opposition to the plan. So I just want to make it clear, the survey and just like when we had the B3 rodeos and we thought they were great until it happens. So that does not represent the entire population that we do, and I just want to make that note.
Is that it? Councilmember Crouch?
I, I just wanted to, uh, it, the report was, was really good and it, it brought out a lot of, uh, items that we need to identify in the, in the report, the maintenance of the existing parks, uh, the recreation center that we need, uh, the swimming pool that, that we need, and a lot of people spoke of that, the signage. I think the signage is a, is a huge thing that we could start with, like kind of, we always say low-hanging fruit, that's a good low-hanging fruit thing. I think, uh, a lot of the comments I've got, um, phone calls this week, uh, the rodeo could use some signage. So that's really good low-hanging fruit so that people know which direction to go for the show horses and which way to go for the different events. Um, the bridge part is, is going to be awesome. It's going to be a, a huge beacon because if we, if it's lit up, you can see it from the highway with the new overpasses we got, it's just going to make people, uh, want to come downtown and see what's over there that's projecting those lights. Um, the grant, uh, funding that we can get, I know we've had, this is the third park survey that I've had to deal with since I've been in town, 2008, 2015, and then the 2023. Uh, there's a lot of things that are listed in all three surveys. So we're kind of, uh, behind the times a little bit in, in getting the survey and everybody telling us what we need and then actually implementing it. So I, I'm hopeful that we can really implement all the stuff that we've got, we just have to find some money, uh, to put it all in. So that's what makes the world go around. Um, I think one thing that you're gonna, that you're seeing right now is Bastrop loves their rodeo. And, uh, and there's many people that are in here as compared to the thousand people that turned in a survey. Um, number one, uh, shame on us for not everybody, 11,000 people filling in a survey, we could have got a better, uh, idea of what exactly everything that we need. Uh, but I think this group in here, the, the quantity of people, uh, shows that Bastrop loves their rodeo and it's a big, it's a big event. So I'm glad that everybody's showing support of that and I, I'm just thankful for that. Um, and the sports complex, we absolutely need a sports complex. Um, where it goes, it can go anywhere, a flat field. Like you said, it's a flat field. Uh, we definitely have to have one. Anybody moving to town, uh, working for any of the bigger companies that are coming to the area, uh, one thing they're going to look at is something for their kids to do. Um, we, we have got to have a place for their kids to play, participate in sports and it needs to be bigger and safer than what we've got now. So, um, I think, thanks for bringing all that stuff up and, uh, thanks for all the time you've spent on it. It's a, a really good report.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Councilmember Plunkett?
Yeah, I just wanted to suggest one potential reason that you didn't get a lot of feedback, um, mentioning Mayfest Park or the rodeo or anything like that, is the fact that we don't use it. It's a, um, that's been a problem that I've been talking about for years since I was on the Visit Bastrop Board, uh, and when I was on the EDC. Um, we have, as a city, made it too difficult to use the facility. And when the facility doesn't get used, it gets forgotten. And, uh, I've been guilty of that at times because I've talked about it a lot, my first couple of, you know, years on each one of those boards. And after a while, you don't hear anything about it, you get on to other things and, and it kind of falls by the wayside. But it's always been up there as, you know, the people who are new to town don't even know it's up there. And, um, most, you know, for the most part. And I think there's a proposal I think we're going to hear hopefully a little bit later that, uh, that could put some use to that facility. And, you know, my thing is with any facility, if you don't use it, it dies, it withers, it dies. And we need to make use of the resources that we have. And if that's a great resource up there, it's been neglected for years and years. And if we can put some money toward that and get it back to working again, we don't have to worry about it being, going away because too many people are going to be using it, they won't allow it to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor ProTibman Kirkland?
So I'm not sure where this is going to go because I don't know the answer to my question. Um, the very first time that we met, when you presented, um, did you just come out of Seguin, having done a plan in Seguin?
Yeah, I'm from Seguin and we-
Oh, not you personally, but-
Yeah, but I am from Seguin, but we also did the City of Seguin, uh, comprehensive parks master plan.
Okay, great, yeah, then, okay, I do slightly remember then, good. Um, and in that very first discussion before you had taken the pulse of our community, um, I recall you saying something in the ballpark of that community has just gotten large enough to sustain and build a rec center. And, um, given that they're about three times larger than Bastrop, one could conclude simply from that comment that Bastrop is not big enough to build or sustain a rec center. Maybe that's flawed, but it, one could try to, to conclude that based simply on that comment. So my question is, what difficulties do you think Bastrop would have building or maintaining one based upon the fact that it's not as big as Seguin?
The first one that comes to mind is funding. You know, more and more, these facilities are becoming exponentially expensive. You know, the City of New Braunfels just completed one and it was tens and tens and tens of millions of dollars. Um, they, they require partnerships, they require additional staff, they require maintenance and operation funding, you know, et cetera. You know, so when there's a system that's already, uh, suffering from, from various pressures and deficiencies and lax resources to begin with, to add a new facility on top of that, just kind of stretch every, it stretches everything even so much more thinner. Um, that said, um, I do want to, to mention one comment that when we look at these comprehensive park master plans, park and recreation master plans, you know, we really do a three-lens approach of methodologies. Number one, we look at natural resources and man-made features that, that could either, uh, you know, enhance or, or, uh, bisect the community in any way. Um, number two is looking at the standard space assessment where we look at national standards, peer cities and see where, where does the, uh, City of Bastrop compare both nationally, but also regionally. But then the third lens is the demand-based methodology, which that's all about the community based on stakeholder and community feedback. So let me just put it this way. If the National Recreation and Parks Society says, hey, Mark, you know what, according to the national trend, um, you should have, I don't know, 100 pickleball courts. Let, let me just use that word for example. And nobody from the community says they want a pickleball court, then why would we recommend that? So what we do is we look at these three different methodologies to see what key themes start surfacing to the top. And when you have those key themes across the three methodologies, that's where you get the biggest bang for the buck because it's going to solve multiple issues. You know, so that's where you really try to be more efficient, but also more strategic in the implementation of this because it's going to have that ripple effect. So going back to the recreation center, you know, the opportunity is there and it shouldn't just be based on, uh, don't quote me on this statistic, but say for example, a minimum population of 20,000 inhabitants or, or whatever. It should be that combination between the different methodologies to say, do we have the partnerships? Do we have the funding? Do we have the, the community demand, support, you know, and do we have, you know, the abilities to do that and, and opportunities to bring that on, on board without everything else suffering? So it, it really has to be that sweet spot in the middle. And I don't know if that really answers the question, but at least it provides a little bit more perspective on the issue.
Fair enough. Um, and then my second question, Sylvia, I'll say, uh, Ms. City Manager, uh, do we happen to have the raw data from all of the comments?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I have one question for you, and I usually like to reserve my comments, um, how do you try to see, for after citizens' comments, but I do have a question for you because I do agree with Councilmember Sanders that there was the confusion, I think, part of the confusion, I'm not going to say all of it, but, um, when you, when we did like the midway point and review of the plan, there was the soccer concept and then there was a rodeo event space type of concept. But then when we come to the, the end here, all we see is just a soccer concept. I asked about it, it was explained to me that it was just a concept, we, it's up to council to do, I get it. Um, but I, I am interested in wondering, um, why did the second option get pulled? Because I do think that that probably should have been left in. Whether it was or not, we can change it, we have the ability to do that, I get it. But I, I actually thought that was a beautiful- that was a beautiful concept. Um, I think that the public would have been happy had they seen that concept instead of just the soccer field, so why was there a decision to pull that concept?
So in the plan, uh, for all, well, for all of the parks that you saw today and the potential improvement, we provided two concepts, uh, for each one of them, across the board, and that was part of our scope of work. So working with the steering committee and working with the Parks Advisory Board and city staff, we were able to, to talk about the different concepts, present the different concepts, and then receive feedback, uh, consolidated feedback that, that gave us a direction to either do, insert one concept or create a third that makes both, or, or something along those lines. So in this particular example, we, we presented those two concepts and, and we were, we were instructed to kind of include one in, in the plan.
Well, I'm really sorry to hear that, because I know for a fact that the feedback from council at, at the midway point was, we want to make sure we still see a concept with the rodeo. So I, I still don't really understand if the fee, if you were wanting our feedback, we gave you our feedback, and then we still didn't get the concept we wanted, then, and you can understand why, there's some confusion. Um, I, I don't by any means think that by adopting the plan today, that means we can't look at a concept for a rodeo. I get it, uh, but I also understand that the public wants to see a concept, uh, council members want to see a concept of the rodeo. I don't know if that means we have to put off adopting it, or what, but in the plans, I think having two options would be great anyway, because ultimately, we need to decide what option we're actually, we're gonna approve while we're still sitting up here, so.
Just to clarify, eh, even, and I've said this all night, but like, even though these are concepts, by no means, like, are they even to the level that they could be constructed? I mean, you know, we, this doesn't negate the fact that, that if there are improvements, that community input should be received and, and a site-specific master plan be created, you know, and I think, I think we use this opportunity, since there is so much activity, you know, with Mayfest, an opportunity and, and voice from the community to say, this is what we want, let's explore the option, let's do a site-specific master plan, let's engage another survey to say, what are the amenities that we want here, how do you want to, you know, incorporate some of these, these improvements or amenities to not only, you know, have Mayfell, Mayfest be more active, but also how can it elevate the overall parks and recreation system for the City of Bastrop?
Which is why I think having both versions of each park, the concept for each park would be good, because people are visual people, like, you're saying, oh, yeah, we can do all kinds of things with this park, but sometimes you have to show the idea of what can be done. Um, so I, I really would like to see the two concepts for each park, because I thought they equally offer different things, and ultimately, we will be looking at them and saying, hey, well, we want this, or we don't need that, or maybe we can put this over here, and if we have the extra visual, it, it can't do anything but help us in making our final decision.
Yeah, and for the record, in the, in the plan, we do have both. So it was just in tonight's presentation, um, I, it slipped my mind, I can't include both, but in the actual plan on the, on website and what's being intended, uh, to be the final deliverable-
So in the presentation, it's just showing the soccer field.
Right, but in the plan, it is, yeah, it does have both plans in there, and, um, everything that we worked on for all parks, uh, will be provided to city staff as the closeout document, so, um, both plans, if they were included in the final or not, any efforts that we did during this process are being provided as closeout documents.
Okay, great, thank you.
And for clarification, Councilmember Lee, we, we're, our decision tonight is to accept the plan, so open up the door for grant applications to fund some of the things we want to do. We're certainly in no way, shape, or form ready to adopt anything until we have further discussion, but I appreciate the conversation. Councilmember Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. I forgot to ask a question, but just a little short comment on what Cheryl just said, and you were talking about maybe expanding and looking at the rodeo, we have that. It was the twenty seventeen Mayfest Park and Rodeo Comprehensive Plan, and that's included in our packet, which actually does exactly what we're talking about, is taking what we have now and expanding on it and making it work, so that, we already have that, so we really don't have to pay for another one of those, because it's sitting on the shelf, and it's sitting right there, and there it is, look at that, there it is, on the screen.
I had Colin have it prepared, just in case.
Thank you so much, Colin. So that's what we have, and, and that's, that's the plan that, that encompasses it all. But going to another question, and I'm sorry I forgot this earlier, I've, I've asked the question at least at a few meetings, I definitely asked it at the workshop last week, why in, uh, in any of our, that have courts, but specifically Mayfest Park and Bob Bryant Park, why have we taken courts that are serving dual purposes? We have tennis, we have pickleball, there's strike for both. Why are we taking dual purposes courts and making them single purpose courts by putting only the word pickleball? I've asked for tennis to put, be put alongside pickleball, I've asked two, three, four times, hadn't been done, so why are we do, why are we limiting the population who can use our parks?
Um, I don't remember that comment, but it, that's definitely not our intention, and we can definitely address that comment. Uh, in fact, the trend is to have them be multiple purpose, uh, across the board, so, uh, we can definitely address that comment, um, and, and I can revise that, you know, and, and update the plan accordingly.
Thank you.
Councilmember Krouge.
I, I'm glad you pointed out that there was two options on the master plan, I know you, you didn't, uh, choose the one tonight that had the rodeo arena, because you didn't know there was gonna be seventy people here to look at the rodeo arena. Um, so there is, there is two plans for it, I, I think that, um, it would be wise for us to maybe form a committee to get a list of the things that, um, are needed at the rodeo arena as far as repairs, upgrades, things like that, um, so that we can start addressing those things. We talked about it in our, our parks workshop the other day, as far as fixing old equipment, rusted equipment, making a list for all the other parks, I think we should do that, um, with that park as well, and then, uh, I know I've got a list of about forty things that, uh, I've received in the past two days, uh, that we, we could do, so, um, we, I think it'd be, uh, wise to either form a committee or something like that to, uh, start addressing those things and get those, those things fixed. Um, as far as approving the master plan, there, there is two versions of it in the master plan, we're gonna take it after the citizen comments, I guess, vote, so, uh, we'll, we can talk about that then. I also wanted to bring up, and I've brought this up a couple of times, uh, naming rights for playing fields, they're, they're everywhere, um, Water Burger Field, uh, that's come up a couple of times, there's one in Corpus Christi, um, there's McDonald's Park, there's, could be, uh, Tesla Park, there's a lot of different things, so I think that's one, to me, is one good way to, uh, get some funding sources for those things. Um, so if, um, if we can look at those options as well, I'm sure when we're going through this parks master plan and trying to pay for all this stuff, uh, there's a lot of generous people in the city that maybe they, that could help out, and there's a lot of big companies coming here, maybe they can help out with, uh, with some of that piece of it too, so just wanted to mention that one more time, that's it, thanks.
Thank you, and you'll recall after our workshop, we provided, uh, staff with, with some direction, one was to prioritize the projects, one was to come back with policies for us to consider, and a really big one in my, mine was an inventory of, uh, needed repairs and needed equipment in there, so I appreciate you bringing that back up. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I guess I'll go ahead and say my comments now, because I feel like we already have a committee, we have the Parks Board, that's what the Parks Board is for.
Thank you, thank you, that's what I'm saying, no more committees, we have them.
Yeah, but, um, and I kinda feel, I kinda feel like, and I, I certainly want, this is more for Terry, if you want to sit down for a little while, I think my-
No, no, no.
I think my comments are gonna be more directed toward Terry and the city manager. But, um, I kinda feel like, I watched, so I was out of town, I wasn't here for the, the meeting last week, was that last week? Um, but I watched it, so, and I, one of the things that I left, I was, I felt like there was no direction given. Um, I, I know we said we want to look at this, we want policy, we, we, we need a plan, we want to look at upgrades, I, I, the way my brain works is I write out, this is what I'm gonna do. Step one is this, this is what we need to take a look at first, this is kind of what I consider the low hanging fruit, let's start here, here's phase two, it's a bigger process, this is where we go into phase two, because it's gonna take more time to get the grants, it's gonna take more time, or more money to spend, more time planning, and then to me, I see Mayfest up here as the big bear, right?
There's a list.
It's gonna take a long time for us to really, we can't even decide on what we want it to be, let alone how we're gonna fund it and build it out, and we can't fund it or get grants till we figure any of that stuff out, right? So my, my thought is, I feel like from Terry is asking council to say, okay, where do you, where do you want us to start? Let us know so that we can start internally looking for grants to do what you want us to do. Parks Board, I feel like can do some of the, looking at the equipment, um, looking at the plan, and, um, look, well, I put ADA compliance, looking at signage, um, looking at what upgrades are needed, and I think there's also some confusion, I hear main, I heard maintenance in some conversations and upgrades in others. Our Public Works is doing an amazing job maintaining the parks, they're, they're maintaining them, they're mowing them, they're, they're clearing brush where they need to, I, the upgrades is what, am I wrong, the upgrades is more of, of what's, this plan is referring to, of what might need to be upgraded in the park versus just the upkeep of the park. So to me, I feel like, if we're gonna, uh, we need to give them some direction, council. I feel like we, we as a council body need to say, this is where we'd like you to start, we'd like you to start with, I think ADA compliance is very important, and that was talked about a lot in the survey, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong. So, uh, this is what we want you to do, staff, is start looking at our parks to see where we're not ADA compliant, that might already be built in this massive document you gave us, um, but let's start there, um, and then start looking at the grants that are gonna help us get there, or what, what we have now that will help us get there, that's where, our, that's our starting point, is how do we bring our parks up to ADA compliance? Then we, low hanging fruit would be signage, low hanging fruit would be the Parks Board going out and, and reading the, um, master plan, comparing what's in the master plan in terms of upgrades to what's in the parks, and then giving us a priority list of what they feel are, um, important to start now, so that we can get a cost for how much that's gonna be. Um, and then, expanding recreational programs is gonna be an ongoing thing for fifty years, so that's just, it's gonna be in all the phases, Terry, get used to that. So I kinda feel like, and correct me if I'm wrong, Terry, I kinda feel like that's what you need from us, you need us, once it's approved, to say, I, I kinda felt from the conversation, it was like, well, we, we want this and we don't want that, and how, why wasn't this in there, and I want to see more, but that's what y'all just spent all of your time and energy doing for the last three or four months, is putting all of that down on paper, and I feel like it was, you were being told, okay, go back to the drawing board, um, but you've already been at the drawing board, now we get the color on the drawing board and make it whatever we want it to be, and I feel like that's the direction we should be giving them, or this is gonna sit on a shelf for another year, and we're still gonna be trying to figure out what's going where. So I, I don't, I don't know if we need to approve this piece first and then come back to have that discussion. Um, council members think about what, because that was just what I think the low hanging fruit is, y'all may have a completely idea of what the low hanging fruit is, um, and we all discussed that at a different meeting and workshop. Um, step two to me would then be the Old Iron Bridge, um, and Mayfest, I think council needs to look at the, do we need to do a workshop, we need to look at the different concepts, council needs to decide if they want a bench there, if they want this there. I personally, um, want the rodeo, I've been here all my life, I understand the significance and importance of the rodeo, but I also think that there's a lot of land just for a rodeo arena, um, that we could be bringing in additional revenue in if we make it a multipurpose type of area, so not only do we have a brand new spanking rodeo arena with brand new seating and shading please, um, we also have buildings where we can host events, and while the rodeo's going on, George Strait's next door and at the concert venue, and I think that we need to be strategic in how we use that land, because we are gonna dump a lot of money into, um, that land, and that money, we should see a rate of return. And I don't know, I'm not a rodeo, I'm not a cowgirl, although I did think I was gonna see when an urban cowboy came out, I'm not, but I, I do know that there are rodeo circuits, I typically see them come through once a year annually, again, she's shaking her head, I don't know the ins and outs of rodeo, I know, I, from what I understand, someone leases it now and does horse roping or something once a week, or something like that, does that bring in revenue to the city, or just him? So, um, there's, there's enough land out there for us to have our rodeo arena, and still make it a multipurpose type of place where we can generate tourism in our city, increase our sales tax dollars, have George Strait come down and do a concert, let's, let's kind of think outside of just how, just making it a, a rodeo, um, but trust me, nobody on this dais wants to take away the rodeo arena, I don't think his intent, ever, was to take away a rodeo arena, it just kind of got communicated the wrong way. But, um, I, I do, and Terry, again, tell me, am I wrong, is that what you're needing from us, a little bit more specific direction to help guide you and the Parks Board and Public Works down a path of, a start place?
I'm, I'm not ever gonna stand before you and say, we don't need more guidance. More direction is always better, I mean, that, giving direction on, because then we're all headed in the straight, in, in the same direction. Um, I, I take my guidance from you guys and I take my guidance from the city manager, so whatever y'all ask for us to do, my, my goal is to serve as many people as we can serve in our parks and recreation. How we do it?
It's up to us.
I, I, you know, it's, I, I think we've gotten some direction, I think we've gotten some, um, clear understanding that, that maintenance is, is maintaining what we have is super important, and how do we, how do we do that, and, and is there more that we can do in that area? Um, ADA is something that keeps coming up, I do think that that's something we're already doing, is looking for, um, additional grant and funding sources. I, I will tell you that this whole plan in itself has already jump-started an enormous amount of work in our parks and in our funding sources, just because the ideas were put together in, in a document, oh, yeah, yeah, we need to do that, we are, as the city manager stated, we're already looking at, how can we, um, bring back to you policy that gives our park system some, you know, strength in it on providing more green space for our community in, in the times that we're in right now as far as development is concerned? So I think we're, we're already moving forward, the plan, to me, is already working, it's generating the, the conversation, praise God for that, you know, it's generating the conversation that we need to do, what we need to do to serve as many people as we can, and, and so, did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, um, it did, and, and so, again, I think that by council makes, making some decisions at the appropriate time, again, I, I think we're just, we're just kind of approving, we're just accepting your documents so you can move on with your life at this point, and then, and then, then we're gonna make other decisions, and then I, I kinda feel like we sh, we shouldn't be waiting on them to come back to us, we should be saying, this is what we'd like to see, bring it to us, then we approve it and go forth, make the money and get it built. Maybe I'm wrong, I just feel like that's the better way to do it, so, that's, that's my two cents on this subject, thank y'all.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
So Councilmember Lee, you're right, the acceptance of this plan is just the beginning, it is just the beginning, and no, we do not need any further direction than what is in this plan, just like the Development Services Consultant, as I told StanTech, and I'll say to every consultant, myself included, he said one thing, another will say another, they're called consultants, same with attorneys, same with engineers. It did point out some very glaring issues in our park system, super glaring, we need to do a better job, we're already working on that. What this will also indicate is all of those things that are in all of those concept plans, trust me, Bob Bryant ain't gonna have a zip line, it just isn't, the elevation isn't there, I don't want a zip line over the ditch, and I really don't think anybody else wants a zip line over the ditch. I might be wrong, but, and, we do have to have some pretty serious conversations over these things. What is frustrating for me is we get scope creep during- What is frustrating for me is we get scope creep during these types of processes. And all, and, and these people are sitting in this audience because I explained to you guys in Corpus Christi, the voter said, you will not close Shoreline Drive. Guess what happened? Staff incrementally closed Shoreline Drive. Shoreline Drive doesn't exist anymore. That's what these folks in the audience are afraid of, that a picture is going to be a catalyst to something they didn't want to have happen. I would be happy if tonight you guys removed the Mayfest portion of this plan and either inserted that one or just didn't adopt that portion altogether and said you needed to do something different.
Once, once again, it's a business meeting, go ahead.
The, the, the third part to that is, you know, there's this belief that you must have an adopted plan to get grants. He and I will hand wrestle over it, and I bet you I'll beat him because you don't. I was my own liaison to Parks and Recreation. I used to come to the state, I used to come to Austin from down south and meet personally with Texas Park and Recreation. I got a million dollars for Com Brown Harbor, I got a million dollars for the beach walk in Corpus Christi. It is possible. This plan is just meant to inform what we need to do. That's it. It is not the Constitution, it is not anything else, but it is a great guidepost to start that we need to do a better job. We absolutely, both in policy, we don't want just junk property that's flooded and you can't ever use it, and, you know, that's what developers dedicate as parks. That's our policy today. In the B3 code, you can donate a drainage pond and that equals public-private space. Not a good idea. Um, but the second part to that is what is good space? And we can, we're already addressing those policies. The inventory of our parks and what we need to do in those parks, that is completely separate in part. We haven't funded it appropriately. Council now has that light bulb turn on. It has not been funded appropriately in the last 10 years, 15 years. And I think more importantly is this community is craving a park and recreation system. We don't have that today. We have a Parks Operations Department who mows and tries to do a good job of keeping the existing park equipment. We don't have plans to build anything. Next, uh, council meeting, you'll see two shade structures. That's what we put in the budget last year, pre-Sylvia. You put in two shade structures. The equipment underneath needs some pretty serious attention, but we're gonna focus on shade structures. So it's getting our priorities straight. So I really want everybody to just kinda get back to the two instead of the 10 and go, this is a guidepost for what we need to do. And we've already started doing a whole heck of a lot of what's in this plan. So if it would make the community have a better, warm and fuzzy, then take out that component of the plan and we move on with the rest of it.
Thank you, ma'am. You know, 97.8% of the stuff that we want to do and is laid out in the plan is gonna cost money. So we have to hit those targets of opportunity. And when those opportunities come about, we need to be nimble enough to address those. Council member Meyer?
Yes, thank you. Since Sylvia men- mentioned this plan, uh, that's up on the screen, I would like to make note, this is the only plan, not Concept A, not Concept B, that keeps the show barn. That, that's the plan right up there. Concept A, the mayor brought up cost is 12 to 13 million dollars. Concept B is seven to eight million dollars. It only cost, well, not only, $10,000 is a lot of money, but we spent $10,000 on that plan back there, right there on that screen to develop this. So that can be added to, and the show barn is still there.
But a show barn can be added to any of the concepts, right? Cause again, we're not, we're not adopting one specific concept. So if, if a show barn is important, that can be added once we get ready to approve whatever's gonna go out there, no? Right? Yeah.
Yes, after we shored it and go, okay, what's our, what's our starting blank canvas? What is it that we need? We learned, um, from the fire recently, some dead and buried agreements that are still gentlemen or ladies agreements about who stores what there. They're not anything in writing, it's not, it's just that, you know, we know emergency operations for the county brings Williams some haze, and even stuff from the Gulf Coast when there's a hurricane up to Mayfest Park. I don't believe StanTech was informed of that information because I know I personally wasn't informed until this last week. So I think they did the best they could with the information that they had available. Now we have more information available. Now it's time, time to take a second look.
Council member Crouch.
Thank you. I'm, I'm glad you brought up the animal rescue because that is part of the animal rescue plan when we have fires. I think the last fire, we just had last week, there was animals brought to the, to the arena for that. So that's, we, we need to be, we need to recognize the facility that we have. Um, we need to recognize that, uh, you can't put a show barn anywhere in any of the parks and any of the land we've got, uh, but we, we have one already. We don't need to go to the cost. If you were to build that, duplicate that, uh, complex that's up there now and tried to duplicate it today, it would cost a lot of money. The price tag, um, for what we've got up there now, and you, you mentioned the cost for Concept A, Concept B, the, the concept we've got right now is paid for. Uh, alls we have to do is upgrade it and pay for it, and then there's minimal cost associated with that. We can add to any of these parks. That, that, the size of that park that you're looking at up there now, um, it is, is miniscule as compared to what the city needs for parkland. We need a soccer complex. It would take double that, uh, to put in a proper soccer complex with all the things that it, that's needed to go with it. So, um, as we're looking at, at this and approving it, um, we, we need, we need to get it approved, number one, cause we have to get it done so we can get grants. We need to be, to, to recognize it. When we go to, uh, approve it, we need to, uh, consider maybe adding this concept in, uh, with the rest of them. Um, and we need to, uh, think about the other uses for this facility as far as the animal rescue and, uh, the things that we've already got up there. So, um, we, that's just all things we need to take into consideration for. And then the cost just to, you know, get rid of it and then put it back somewhere else is, is very, very expensive. So, uh, we need to use the facilities that we've got as much as we can just to, uh, not pay for that new, new cost of stuff.
And I'll remind you again, we're not approving, we're merely accepting. So on that. I see no other lights on, so we will move to the public comment period. Thank you so much for the presentation, you're willing to answer questions. Our first citizen, uh, comment will come from Wesley Eves. Mr. Eves here? He wishes to speak in favor of agenda item 9D. Is Linda Waxman here?
Yes.
You said you did not wish to speak, but, uh, you also didn't say what agenda item that you were wanting to speak on. Is it 9D and do you wish to speak?
I'd rather not speak because now I'm hoarse for the rodeo.
Okay. All right.
But you can read my comments.
No, ma'am, I'll just, I'll just say, you're in opposition, it'll be available on there. Uh, Peyton Benight? Please state your name and address and your position.
I'm Peyton Benight Reinhardt. Um, what was it, the address?
143 Bailey Boulevard.
Yeah.
Does that help you out?
Yes, sorry, I couldn't remember what you said. Um, okay, I am from Bashrop hometown here, grew up here. Currently work as a ranch and rodeo marketing manager, and, um, I work with rodeo committees across North America. So to your question about like, does a rodeo arena that's accessible bring in revenue? It does. Um, and I just wanted to clarify on the accessibility, just to help us have more access to the arena. Um, here, as of late, it hasn't been great from the city. Um, and looking at the, the draw, of the CAD drawing, I wanted to remind the committee about the need for trailer parking. I didn't see any trailer parking availability. So if we were to add in a multi-sports complex at Mayfest with the arena, we also need to keep in mind, like, trailers need to be able to park and go in and out of there as well. Um, from the revenue side, I mean, there's, I work with 35 different rodeos, so I would love to like talk about that when I have more time as far as like the revenue that could come in, but mostly the accessibility and making that arena accessible from a community standpoint through a local rodeo organization. Um, I don't think it should be through one person, um, but leasing that for the community's use. Um, I've shown up to multiple ride nights a few years ago that were posted on the city website with horses saddled, ready to go. Arena was completely locked, um, had no way of accessing it. Um, so just making it more of a community center as well as the show barn. I, I feel like this town's heritage is really deep in that agricultural space. Being an ex-ag teacher, I know that there are a lot of, uh, folks here that really, um, love to raise animals, and that's what they make their income off of. And we still need to nurture that generation growing up as well as the rodeo community. Um, so the revenue is there. Um, if you could host 15 events per year that are multi-days, you, you're looking at an economic impact of a million for, for some of the, um, rodeos that I've worked with. I know, like, I can get more in detail, but, um, it does make a difference. And I think that the accessibility is what's causing that lack of, of use there. And leasing it out to a community organization would be really helpful for us to kind of, um, help with those rental and that access for the, the community events. And not just from like a big event, um, not talking about like the homecoming rodeo that, in, in separate and that, but like, you know, community ride nights, training, training hours for people just to go up there and work their horses. I mean, I spent two days a week growing up in that arena, and we had it open to access for everybody that wanted to come out and ride. And they were covered under a membership, um, insurance liability form that they filled out through the membership of the organization that they were running from.
Thank you, appreciate the comments. And to remind everybody, again, these are concepts, you're a long way from having a fleshed out plan here, but I appreciate those comments. Those are, I think trailer parking is extraordinarily important, so thank you. Uh, Taylor Holmuth? I tried. I'll give you the opportunity to correct me.
I'm part of the rodeo community, so I'm just do it. Um, I appreciate y'all, y'all have hit on a lot of things that I'm gonna say here in this speech. Oh, it's Taylor Holmuth.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I live at 6994 State Highway 304 in Roseaki, and I am speaking on items 10A and 9D. And I am here to tell you that I am in favor of tearing down Bashrop Arena, but please continue to listen all the way through. I think it would be safe to say that the Bashrop Arena has had a big impact on my life. It is where I tried the horse that I won my first saddle and broke my first arena record at just eight years old. It is where I would go to meet Janet Staten, a local, and she would tune on my horse that I won both state champion and reserve champion titles in junior high that would then lead me to represent the whole state of Texas at Nash, at the national finals rodeo. It is where I would go to rope from time to time, which helped me accomplish getting to represent the state of Texas again in high school and go on to win fourth place at Nationals. In my high school years and college years, I have won the Bashrop Homecoming Rodeo in both the barrel racing and breakaway. There's nothing like winning your hometown rodeo. In college, I would come home and need somewhere else besides my parents' house to ride, so I would come to Bashrop and ride in the arena. That would help lead me to getting to represent Sam Houston State University at the College Nationals. The access to the Bashrop Arena played a big part in my success. It was also the place where I met a lot of people that would become lifelong friends. We would come together as like-minded people and enjoy and cut up as children, getting to do what we loved. I continue to believe that if this arena were able to be accessed the same way it was for me as a kid, it would play a big, make a big impact on youth's lives. There have been many, many cowboys and cowgirls that are from the area that have the same story as me. Some have gone on to do other things and some still reside in the area and continue to start businesses, volunteer, and make an impact on this community and in agriculture. I propose that if you're considering keeping the arena, that you put a club or organization in charge of running, managing, and maintaining the arena grounds. There is an organization that once ran the arena. Getting a new one started will not be an issue, just tell us when. This organization will work with the city and form a better understanding and processes that help and does not hinder the rodeo arena. I propose that if you're, if the city is leaning towards tearing down the rodeo arena, that you tear it down and build it back better. An arena that is covered and climate-controlled could be resourced for many different reasons for the community. The city could build an area for a community garden. The garden can have a center that has classes to help educate the modern day individual on how to vertically farm or have hydroponics. A climate-controlled arena would allow the community to use the facility during natural disasters. If the city put in bathrooms and showers, people can be housed there. If better pens are built, cattle, horses and other livestock, animals can be brought in and out of harms way. The climate-controlled arena can also be used for soccer and football practice when the rain doesn't allow for an outdoor practice. It could also be an area to hold the stock shows, both local and county, which we haven't had in a while. You can also have events outside of the normal agricultural activity. There are many ways to integrate the progression and modern day person with the people still in this community making memories and chasing big dreams that involve agriculture. Thank you, mayor and city council, for taking the time to listen. I would be happy to sit down and speak with any of you individually about ideas on how to move forward and make it work for everyone.
Thank you. You're speaking in opposition to this item, correct? Okay, thank you. Moving on, Johnny Sanders.
Thank you, mayor and council. Johnny Sanders, I live, uh, 156 Spring Ranch. Not in the city limits, but I can throw a rock and hit the city limits, so I'm just outside. But I've listened to everybody and I feel more comfortable now that you can make the right decision. We've got a new mayor, we've got a new city council, uh, we've got a new city manager. You've got a good direction. You'll make the right decision. The right decision is what we talked about, what you're here talking about. Soccer fields, we need soccer fields, but we don't need just four, we need a bunch of soccer fields. You know, there's a bunch of people that go play select ball in Flugerville and Round Rock, and that's the kind of thing we need over there somewhere else in Bashrop. But the facility we got, uh, just build on it, you can cover it. We tried to cover it 40 years ago, 30 years ago, tried to get the funding. So all I'm saying is I've heard a lot of good comments. I think everybody feels comfortable, you're gonna make the right decision. And one concept is the show barn, the Kenny, Kenny E Step Show Barn. That arena, Will Rogers gave that property. The arena was moved just west of where it is now, over to the new arena. Show barn, you know, the city owned all that property. City owned American Legion, all that was given by Will Rogers. So I trust you'll do the right thing. Uh, the regional concept's a great concept. Uh, as you know, the city limits does not see limits, you can ask Kevin. The colony's not the city limits. You know, the school district can tell you the city limits, the, the draw districts, over 100,000 people are coming in HEB. So that's what you're looking at, and y'all know that, y'all, y'all know what's going on. So I, I'm not gonna take any more time, uh, but I feel comfortable you'll make the decision. In fact, I'm gonna walk out when I leave, cause I know you'll make the right decision. And I'll point out too, my sister's on city council, so you don't...
Full disclosure.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Neil Cody? If you'll approach the podium and give us your name and address, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, council. My name's Neil Cody, live at 2002 Cedar Street. I'm here in favor of not tearing it down. I'm with the Bashrop Area Livestock Show and Fair Association. Our concerns are that if y'all do wind up tearing it down, making this big soccer field, we already got limited parking up there, so the parking's gonna be a big issue for us when we have a show barn, uh, when our stock, our annual stock show is. And later on down the road, that whenever you do decide if you're gonna do these soccer fields, then 17 years down the road, when our lease is up on the place, then where's all these kids at the school gonna show? Where are they gonna take their animals to show? And I think councilman Crouch had touched on the emergency management part of it, that we have the show barn there that we let them use to stack hay, feed, et cetera, in. And the arena, there's like a couple weeks ago, that we had several animals that were brought in on account of the fire situation. So we are, you know, concerned about that, those issues right there. Uh, you know, that's, the arena is kinda known for emergency management, for people, like even during the COVID, when it started, Houston Livestock Show, when they shut it down in the middle of the show, people stopped in there to relieve their animals, let them rest, then they could go on further, whether they were going to Amarillo, Austin, wherever they were going. So, I mean, it's not only that, I mean, it's, it's a historical deal. And I'm kinda like Johnny was, I think y'all have made a decision. I'm not opposed to soccer fields, we just don't want them there. You know, we just don't have enough room up there.
There's no, there's no plans to tear down though.
I, I agree, I agree.
Mayor Proton Kirkland has a question specifically for you.
Yeah, so you, you mentioned in 17 years when your lease is up.
Yes, we have a lease, the, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Lease for what? Who, from whom and with whom?
The, the show barn is sitting on city property. We have a 50-year lease that was signed in, in 1990. So, uh, the building and everything that sits on the property belongs to the show barn, to the association, it don't belong to the city. So in 17 years from now... So in 17 years from now, we're worried about what's gonna happen, where are these kids from the school gonna come show? What's gonna happen? If y'all take this plan in, y'all are gonna need more parking, then the little show barn stuck in a corner with no parking left, and then all of a sudden the show barn's gone.
Okay, so are you saying the show barn is owned by the city and the city leases it?
The city owns the property.
Right.
The Bash Drop Area Livestock Show Fair Association owns the building that's built there. We built it after we signed the lease.
Okay, got it.
So there should be records in the city files and what have you, but I'm not gonna take any more time, but I'm like Johnny, I think y'all have made a decision, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. City Manager, is this news to you like it was me?
Somewhat. Today I received a litany of documents, one of which included a lease, and then the other is the emergency operations documents.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cody. Thank you, Mayor Proton. Don Allen Stewart Jr. Say your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you, sir. Don Allen Stewart Jr. I live at 219 Paint Creek South Road, Page, Texas. My family has been involved in this from the get-go. My mom was the first homecoming queen of Bash Drop. So when we started building the arena, when they let us move to the new site and stuff, it was Bash Drop Family Rodeo that built the arena. We went up there at night, cut pipe, welded pipe, and there was a lot of people that helped. We also, I'm also on the livestock board, and, you know, I've worked with kids for a lot of years, showing cattle, showing pigs, lambs, whatever. I like doing it, I enjoy it, I enjoy the rodeo, I used to rodeo. But like he talked about, the fire that we had in 2011, when we were hauling animals out of the fire and stuff, we had animals there, we had them in sale barns. I worked three days straight hauling cattle and stuff. And then I was up there at the show barn, brought the first tractor up there to stack hay that was being donated and unloading feed. I had one time had 400 groundbells stacked in that barn. I had 1,000 squarebells, not counting all the feed that was there. The agricultural department was there checking it in, and they were checking it out, so it's all records. The rodeo and everything needs to stay. It's family, it's been around for years. And I think if you're gonna give it to somebody to take care of it, give it to the people that built it. The Bash Drop Family Rodeo is the one that built it. Give it to us to lease it and do what we need to do, and y'all will get the hot funds and the other alternatives to everything that would happen. And there's lots of different things, there's lots of different rodeos, lots of different, you have playdays for kids, you have a lot of different deals. So that's all I have to say about it. I think you can make the right decision on it, but don't take our rodeo away from us.
Stand by just a second, Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, a question for you as well.
Yes, sir.
If, I don't know who Bash Drop Family Rodeo is exactly, but if an organization like that were to have a lease on the rodeo arena, how frequently would you guess?
We did, we were with...
But how frequently?
We were with the homecoming deal. When the homecoming gave it up and then started, kept the five-year lease that they've had and stuff, we had the lease, we were taking care of it. We were paying the water bills and the electric bills. And for a long time, we were wondering why the water bill was so high. Well, they never put a separate meter going to the rodeo arena, and it was funneling your bathrooms at the park. And we paid, and we paid the bill.
Let me get to my question, please. So my question is, is how frequently do you think it would get used? You know, like is it, you know, twice a week, twice a month?
I would say, I think you could probably safely say it would get used at least once a month. More than that. I mean...
The Gonzalez Arena is closed for two years right now.
Sorry, say it.
The Gonzalez Arena, right on the road? You can't book anything there for two years.
But it's a covered arena. That's everywhere. You've got the covered arena in Gonzalez, you got the covered one in Taylor.
Okay, okay, okay. Mr. Stewart has a podium right now. If you want to make a comment, please, please sign up, because the mic can't pick you up out in the audience. Are you done, sir?
I am done, and thank you, everybody, and thank you, you as well.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Deborah Jones.
I live at 1606 Pecan Street. When I was told by a Parks Committee member that the city had soccer fields drawn over the rodeo arena at Mayfest Park in response to the rec survey sponsored by the city earlier this year, I called up here, and the first response I got was that I wasn't supposed to have seen that. And the next response was that it didn't matter, and it wasn't the city money, and it's the master plan, so it didn't really matter. And finally, I was told that nobody wanted the arena in the parks survey. Well, I have over 2,500 signatures, and you're talking about the majority of your signatures being people outside of the city? The majority of these are inside the city. And I just think that, I would just ask right now that you take everything out of that parks plan other than the plan that keeps the arena. And I point to the city seal of preserving the past while moving to the future. And I would like to speak directly to the arena not getting very much use. And in response to that, I would like to point out the show barn that has a lease. And let me just point out a few of the things that they do. It's run by the Bash Drop Area Livestock Show and Fair Association. They work with the school district to host foray and FHA events. There's goat roping, there's sheep shearing lessons, dog training, basically anything that has to do with livestock, pigs, goats, sheep, rabbits, cattle. There's dances, there's weddings, there's the master gardeners, there's public speaking, there's art. The first weekend in March is the Bash Drop Area Livestock Show, youth show, with 60 to 80 kids showing animals and learning food prep. I would like to see that sort of model put over the arena. This is, the community is running that center, and they're extremely successful. So these are the specific things that I would like you to consider, is that someone with knowledge of rodeo is the contact for this venue. For example, somebody that would know what kind of pins were needed or what troughs are needed. If you need a water truck, what needs to be drugged. It's not just about appointing somebody up at the city to run that arena. So this is specifically what I'm talking about right now, is access. That is the biggest problem. That arena would be used at least four days a week, every single week, if you had somebody running it. The next thing I would like to point out that we need to, you know, the first number one is access with somebody knowledgeable. Number two, the electric in and around the arena, the RV sites need to be connected, the electricity needs to be organized. Number three, signage. Number four, paint and repair, the announcing box, the weld loose pins and ad pins. Number five, the bathroom needs to be renovated. We don't want all the money that you have just used on the bathroom, so maybe just repair what we have. Number six, more seating and boxes. And number seven, and you've talked about this a lot, a specific site plan to define parking and future use that includes the arena. Every single park that was addressed in that made use of what was existing in that park, except for Mayfest Park. We have an overlay for soccer fields. I say we just have one park planned for Mayfest Park, and that is the existing improvements made better.
Wait a minute, Ms. Jones, Councilwoman Myers has a question for you.
Ms. Jones, thank you so much for those points you brought up. My question to you is, because you are vested so much in what is going on with the rodeo, would you be willing to volunteer to help keep this and make this even better than what we have?
I'd volunteer my money and my time. And I sent to the council an economic plan that was developed in Gonzalez that you can look at, the economic development, and there's gonna be somebody speaking specifically to the impact of roping, is that right? Yeah, I mean, you know, and I'm just gonna say this, and if they say it again, but roping, it is the, Holly, I'm sorry, I don't realize, I don't see where I wrote this down. But anyway, I think Brad's gonna be talking about that and just how much money is spent on that. I think it's the richest event in the world, not only for the participants, but for the prizes, and that's a big part of the rodeo.
Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate it. Next person signing to speak is Carrie Fossler.
Well, then we'll move to Michael Lucas. So Mike Lucas, 709 Hill Street, here in Bash Drop. Mayor, council members, city managers, city secretary, thank you. Obviously, there's passion about the rodeo. I'm not here to speak about the rodeo in any shape, form, or fashion. I am on the Parks Board, and as has been noted by Terry, by Mark, this is not a set in stone, anything like that. I believe as Councilmember Crouch mentioned, other plans that have sat on shelves, you know, we're just looking for some direction, as Councilmember Lee stated, so that we can move forward on things like grants and funding and so forth. I wish we had this many people show up to talk about every single park. You know, we want the feedback, we need the feedback, it's very important, but we also need to be able to make progress moving forward. So I'm here in favor of moving forward with a plan. This plan is a starting point, nothing is set in stone, as Terry has mentioned, as the city manager has mentioned, but as Councilmember Crouch also mentioned, we need to do something. If we don't do anything, it's all just gonna go, you know, continue as is in either low state of repair and/or frustration, and things around us, we know, are continuing to grow, they will continue to grow. There's money available, we just need to go out and get some and start working and continue having some direction so that we're making those improvements. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Carrie Fossler.
Hi, I'm Carrie Fossler. I live at 1903 Main Street in downtown Bash Drop, Texas, and I'm the chair of the Parks Board this year, and I was also on the steering committee that helped drive the survey input that put this plan together. And the very first time I met Mr. Maldonado, and he came to do a presentation, I said, "Excuse me, sir, are you ever surprised?" And he said, "Yes, all the time." So tonight, we're surprised. Like, we didn't hear this much in the survey about the rodeo. So it's fantastic that part of this plan is to have built-in surprises, like it is a living, breathing document, like we talked about. There's room for surprises tonight, there's room for us to accept it, have surprises tonight, have surprises in the future when we get the priorities of the moment flushed out into a site plan. It's built for surprises, just like it's built to hold, be accepted and accept tonight's surprise. So I am here to support the acceptance of the plan with whatever modifications y'all need tonight to make everybody feel comfortable, because this is a very alive surprise, and I'm very much in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. One of our previous signees has decided that she does want to speak to that. Linda Waxman.
I just couldn't help myself.
I understand. Just state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
Linda Waxman, 578 Waterson Road, Bash Drop. The question of renting the arena, I have a lot of knowledge of that because I was the one from the Bash Drop Family Rodeo Club that booked the arena. So I can tell you, and I brought the Family Rodeo Club to this arena when it was first. I was asked to if my club would support it, and we held raffles and we got this arena built with a lot of help. Before that, we had to ride at Elgin because we didn't have an arena here. So our club built up with many hard-working people, and we would run it till 2:00 a.m. because it was so popular. We had a minimum six playdays a year, four barrel races a year. We held a spring rodeo. We, I rented it to circus people, I rented it to mud volleyball people, I rented it to anybody who wanted to rent church, people that just wanted to bring their horses to walk around. Sometimes we didn't, you know, all I did was book it and let them use it if they didn't have any money to bring their church group, because they weren't doing any damage to the dirt, that's all they were doing. And I would take a deposit on Friday, go check the arena on Monday, and give them their deposit check back. When the city took over, it became so complicated and so expensive to run, especially for nonprofit groups, nobody could afford to do it. That's why you have no one participating. It just became too much red tape. When the Bash Drop Family Rodeo Club rented it for the first time, we didn't get our deposit back for, I don't know, three months, four months? And $500 is a lot of money. I guess that's what it was. We haven't rented it in so long, I don't remember anymore, but it's a lot of money to tie up in a club that, you know, operates on $1,500. So, you know, for prizes and things like that, we would need that for the children. So the rodeo arena was used, it was just not a lot of people knew about it, except if you did rodeo, or you went to the circus, or you, you know, were in that church. But it was there for people, and it was, I would say, on my, if it wasn't raining and muddy, because I dug many trenches to get that water out, because there's no cover on it, you can't book an arena, a big operation can't book it because there's no guarantee that it's, we may have rain at that moment. So a place can't book it, and that's one reason that it needs to be covered. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm glad you decided to speak. All right, because there's such passion about this, is there somebody who has not signed up that wishes to add some dead gum? Would you go and fill out a piece of paper, give it to City Secretary, so we can have you on official record? Everybody's watching you now.
You can do it now?
You can.
So my name is Coy Williams, I live outside of...
Wait, 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 get up to the mic for...
My name is Coy Williams, I live outside of City Limits, I live at 113 Lake Drive. So there's a lot of people talking about why we should have it. You guys already made that decision, right? We're not gonna make that decision today. My question is about the presentation he set up. So when you looked at the presentation, and you look at Mayfest, and you go two slides over, it promoted that it would be four soccer fields. In that four soccer fields, in a 10-year revenue, he promoted that it would be 11 million dollars in 10 years revenue. That's 1.1 million dollars a year. I don't know if that's 100% true. I'm not calling the survey a lie, but if I can make a million dollars a year revenue on four soccer fields, that's better than farming. There's gonna be a lot of soccer fields in rural Bash Drop County. So my comment to this committee is, when you're looking at Mayfest and you're sitting over here with, I have no dog in a fight, I support the rodeo committee, I support the rodeo club, but you guys make decisions based upon economic development, income, that's your job. That's your job. So when you go back and you review that, and it states that it was 11 million dollars in 10 years, I don't want you to forget these people that said, "Hang on, it's not all about that. It's about tradition. It's about having a rodeo, it's about having time for the rural Bash Drop." Okay? I am 150% in agreeance that we need a sports complex here. I moved my kids here in the 7th grade, I have a 6th grader, and I have a 7-year-old, a 13-year-old, a 19-year-old. Bash Drop needs to do better for that. But taking a presentation... But taking, taking a presentation that took away the rodeo, and maybe it was lack of the presentation being wrong, and I'm okay with that, but saying that, "Hey, I have a rodeo, I have Mayfest place up here, and I can show you 11 million dollar income revenue in 10 years," that's so lopsided, and you guys, you guys are going to look at that because that's your job. And if you look at what the rodeo is going to bring you, it's not 11 million dollars. No way. We can't, you can't compete with that. But if you do your job and, and go and research outside that, you'll see Gonzalez is doing it, you'll see Taylor is doing it, you'll see Giddings did it. With the economic growth that's coming to Bastrop, we can afford to do it here, it's just going to take some work. But like they said, this arena has already been paid for, it's already there, it will not, yes, yes, we can always take that land and show that that land should make more money, but is it always about the money? So I encourage y'all, when y'all make your decision, and you start looking at the development, that you look at that also. Because the rodeo arena is not going to make you 11 million dollars in 10 years, it's just not. But I encourage you not to look at it being soccer fields to make you 11 million dollars either.
Well, let me clarify something real quick. First of all, there's no intention in returning the rodeo grounds into a soccer field, and although we have to be fiscally responsible, we also, all six of us were elected to represent the entire community, and that's what our intention is, and certainly the community has let their needs known.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate your comments, but I just wanted to provide that clarity.
That's the only reason why I made the comment, is I wanted to clarify that.
I'm with you. I'm with you. Thank you so much. Councilmember Crouch.
Yes, I wanted to address the $1 million in profit for the soccer field. So there's, there's a lot of money involved with the rodeo arena as well, so that, they generate a, can potentially generate a lot of income from events, from team roping events, leasing, leasing the arena, and the million dollars is the, the revenue that the city gets, not specifically from the soccer field, but from hotels, when, when families come here and they stay in the hotel, when they come here and they eat in restaurants, and go shopping, and our, and our buildings fill up with gas at Buc-Ee's, or get a hamburger, or whatever you're going to do there. So that's where the money's generated from. The, the rodeo arena, I, I've talked to, just today, four people called me that were interested in leasing the rodeo arena. I, I think that we can, based on those conversations, and the conversations I've had the past month, that the rodeo arena could be leased weekly, if not for the whole year, and, and we can generate that same kind of, of revenue. If we're looking at, we have to look at land, I think, is one of the big things that we have to look at as far as land availability. That rodeo arena is, is just big enough, in my opinion, for a rodeo arena, and show barn, and what you have up there now. If we had the parking done properly, and the arena and the staging and additional pens brought, brought in or built to house all the stuff that the rodeo arena really needs to be successful, if it's managed properly, then that piece of land up there is probably just big enough for the rodeo arena, and, and, you know, except, accessory items that go with it. So I think one thing we need to do is look at additional land, look at hundreds of acres as far as for soccer fields and playing fields and, and that type of thing, and we don't have to cram it all into one, one little spot. We, we need to plan it effectively and plan it smart, and we don't need to tear down what we've got and start all over again. So all that being said, if the public comments are, are over. Okay, I, I'd like to make a motion for, to approve the plan with the 2016 version of the rodeo arena that we showed earlier on the screen, as compared, and, and replace it with the other two slides, so that if it is, okay, go ahead.
Just want to remind you, there's since been a FEMA building built over there, so that plan's a little bit different, but I get your, I get your comments.
I, I get that, and I was going to, the rest of my comment was, if it's a conceptual plan, then let's use rodeo arena conceptual plan, and then move forward with that, and, and then know that we're, if it's going to change and be a living document, let's live and change with that document versus the other two documents that we've got. So my motion would be to approve the master plan as it is, with the exception of, we've moved forward with the 2016 slide of the rodeo arena versus the other two, and knowing that if, if it's in the best interest of the city, at later time, we just plug in one of those other plans, or we plan around it, but I think moving forward, that's what I'd like to make a motion for.
Council, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second, and obviously, we have some further discussion. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, I want to thank the Parks Board, everyone who took the survey, city manager Terry, and everyone that was under your wings while this process was going through, because I in no way want any of you individuals walking away thinking you didn't do an excellent and thorough job in working with, I'm just going to say Stan Tech, Maldonado, Mr. Maldonado. Took me a second. And putting this all together, it's a massive document, it's a lot of information, I cannot tell you probably 10 words that are on any given page, because it's so massive, but I do, I do want everyone to clearly understand, there was no intent to ever take down the rodeo barn and put up soccer fields. It was presented in a way that gave that impression to the public, and I'm sorry that that happened, but never was it a consideration. It's always been, as far as my understanding and what we've discussed, is upgrading the current arena and adding on, so that we can generate more tourism and revenue for the city of Bastrop, making the, what's there now even better. So I am always a fan, I always saw, I love when citizens come to city council meetings, it's one of my favorite things, to see people come, no matter what the subject matter is, and no matter how I feel about it, because we are here representing you guys. So I appreciate you coming out. I do encourage you to look online at the plan, you can do a search for Mayfest, if that's all you're interested in, and it'll search through every document that has that word for you guys to read, what's currently in the plan. There's one that talks, there's on page 142, it talks about the existing conditions of the park, and what we as council need to look at as far as upgrading and maintaining and improving there. We'll get that soccer field out of y'all's way as soon as I'm sure the city manager can, and, but Mr. Lucas is right, it's a very comprehensive plan that, Mayfest is not the only park you're going to be using in Bastrop, so glance at the other concepts as well, and continue to give us your input. So we appreciate you and the community, and everyone that spent their hard time, time in getting this, this plan together, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Meyer.
I'd like to. I'd like to move to amend the motion.
Sure, you're asking Councilmember Crouch if he will take a friendly amendment.
I agree with Councilmember Crouch's motion, I would just like to amend it to add some language to it.
Your amendment is?
My amendment is to accept the plan on the conditions that Concept A and Concept B are removed from the plan, to be replaced with the language that Councilmember Crouch added. Also, to amend the plan, saying any courts at any parks which are currently dual-purpose courts for tennis and pickleball, maintain this dual-purpose function, and include the word tennis along with the word pickleball.
Councilmember Crouch, do you accept the amendments?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee, as a second, do you accept the amendments?
I'm inclined to say no, only because the, the concept is a concept, what, we're, we're not approving that to be the actual park. The second part of it, I think, should be done actually on a second motion, because it was separate, unless I misunderstood the second part of it. But I, I'm inclined to say no, because it's not a, I do want to remove the tennis courts, I would be, I would be amendable to adding the 2017 to the other concept, I don't remember which one is A or B, and removing the soccer fields. But, so my answer would be no, if she's willing to accept that compromise.
So you do not accept the amendment. Councilmember Meyer, the amendment was not accepted by the second, do you want to rephrase this upon our conversation?
Mayor, I'm, I'm very concerned and questioned on the order, point of order. A motion was made and seconded, we discussed, I made, I moved to amend the motion, which needed to be seconded before we discussed. We don't ask if you second or not when her light was on, we should have called for a second to the amendment. So the order of the process was not followed.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, I had a motion, and I had a second, I had an offer to amend, that was accepted by the person who made the motion, but not by the second of that motion. So what would be my appropriate process?
Mayor and Council, I think that's an appropriate process, asking for a friendly amendment. Ultimately, the friendly amendment was not accepted by both the person who made the amendment and the person that seconded. And so the second, the next process you would go through is actually a vote on whether to have the amendment added to the original motion.
So, do y'all understand what the city attorney laid out?
Yeah, so he's, he's asking us to vote for-
On the amendment.
For the new language.
On the amendment.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Can you repeat it again?
Because if I, if I, as, if I, as the person that did the second, saying, I'm saying I don't accept a friendly amendment, would that friendly amendment be dead? We're still going to vote on it?
We're voting on the amendment based on what I was just informed by.
But I, but it was denied, because I, I'm not accepting it.
Correct. Because, because as the person who seconded the original motion, you did not accept the friendly amendment, the amendment's not friendly. And so in order for the amendment to get on, it must have a majority vote of the city council. So it's possible for the council to vote on this second, this amendment. The amendment could pass, but the original motion might fail with the amendment attached to it.
And can you repeat what your amendment was? Can you remember?
Yes.
I couldn't remember it.
I can't. I would move to amend your motion by only adding the language that it is approved on the conditions that we remove Concept A and B from the concept, and any courts at any parks which are now dual-purpose courts, remain dual-purpose courts, and add the word tennis to pickleball.
There's two, I got you. So I'm saying I don't accept that, based on, I agree with removing the soccer fields. I don't know if that's A or B. I would, and would you be willing to leave in Concept B and add the, what is it, 2017?
That was not my amendment.
No, I'm asking, would you be willing to amend it to that point?
No, I will go with my amendment to Jimmy's motion.
Then I'll, I'll stay with my no to her friendly amendment.
Okay, we've had discussion, we're voting on an unfriendly amendment. I believe that's the appropriate term. And we're voting on the unfriendly amendment, and I would imagine we would need to start with the person who presented the amendment. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
No.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
The amendment passes, is made part of the original motion. We have a first, we have a second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Lee, your light is on, do you want to discuss any further? Councilmember Crouch, your light is on.
I, I just wanted to agree with Ms. Fossler when she said that she was surprised. I, I'm really surprised, too, by the amount of people that we have here. I mean, I, I'm surprised, but not really, because I've been getting so many phone calls, but I'm really grateful, and it, it, this is the second time in a couple of months that it, it just makes me glad to be from Bastrop, for the development group that we had a meeting with a couple of months ago, to this group that came and showed up.
Can I refer really quick, Councilmember Crouch? We, we have, we have a motion hanging, hanging out there.
I thought we voted on that.
We, we voted, we voted on the unfriendly amendment. I don't, I don't want you not to be able to comment, but we have a motion hanging out there.
Well, I made my comment, that's what I want, that's the comment I wanted.
And I do, I do appreciate it. We have a motion, and we have a second, no further discussion. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Council, I really appreciate the discussion. Citizens, I really appreciate y'all coming out. If y'all want to listen to some more scintillating conversation on some other agenda items, you're more than welcome to do so. If not, don't feel embarrassed to leave, we won't talk about you until later. Thank y'all so much, we really appreciate it. You bet.
Mayor?
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Bi-ole break before we start our meeting.
I've been asked for a bi-ole break. We will, we will recess for about five minutes. We are now at a recess. If y'all could take your conversations outside, we'd appreciate it. Now, we appreciate you so much, thank you so much.
I believe the mayor said you don't have to go home, but you can't stay here?
That's right. Wow, now we're going to have an echo in here now. All right, Council, before we move to consent agenda, I need to read this. The city of Bastrop deserves a right to reconvene recess, and realign the regular session, or call executive session, or order a business of any time prior to adjournment. We will now move to the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any member of council wants to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing no comment, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda, seeing no indication? Madam Secretary, if you'll read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the July 24, 2023, joint council and BDC meeting, July 25, 2023, regular meeting, and the 23rd, 2023 workshop. Item 8B, consider action to approve the second reading of resolution number R-2023-110 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving a revolving loan fund program and the expenditure of Bastrop Economic Development Corporation funds, in the amount of $30,000 for the program, repealing all resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date. Item 8C, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-112 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, authorizing the conveyance of fire station number two, located at 120 Corporate Drive, to the Bastrop County Emergency Services District Number Two. This concludes the consent agenda.
Council, you've heard the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'm going to give that to Councilmember Lee, and I'll give the second to Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Consent agenda passes unanimously. We'll move to item 9A, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-116, acknowledging proposed tax rate, no new revenue tax rate, and voter approval tax rate for fiscal year 2023, 2024, which is the fiscal year 2024, calling for a public hearing on September 12, 2023, and authorizing a public notice.
Good evening, Council and Mayor.
Closer, Laura.
Please get closer.
Can y'all hear me now?
We have the outside world who wants to-
Okay. Hi, hello, I'm Laura Allen, I'm submitting on behalf of Tracy Waldron, I have the- I have the pleasure of working under her as the senior accountant. We are bringing you the proposed FY 2023-2024 tax rate. At the end of July, we received our certified assessed property totals. The 2023-2024 includes 83.5% of the under-board review values. We have broken out the freeze adjusted taxable value as well as the new values, bringing a total value of 1.592. This is a copy of our certified totals as received from the county assessor's office. To go over some exciting terminology that will be used on the next slide, we have our no new tax rate, which is basically, as stated, it is, would generate the same amount of revenue based on last year's tax value. Voter approval tax rate is a rate, is maximum rate allowed by law without voter approval. This is a maximum increase of 3.5% of the MNO tax rate, the proposed tax rate which we are discussing tonight, and then the adopted tax rate, which is, will be voted on and adopted on September the 19th. The proposed MNO tax rate will generate a total of $165,634 more revenue than the no new revenue rate. The proposed rate equals the voter approval rate. Just to briefly touch on the different rates, the no new revenue tax rate is .4832. We are proposing a tax rate of .5051. The proposed tax rate would generate an additional about $70,000. The proposed tax rate of .5051 will budget more revenue for property tax than last year budgeted by the amount of $685,169, which is a 93% increase from last year's budget. The average homestead tax value is calculated at $2,883,283,000. With the voter-approved rate plus the debt rate, that would see an average of about $145 tax increase on the average homestead. The city manager is suggesting that the city council approve a notice of proposed tax rate of .5051, which is a 3.5 increase over the no new revenue MNO rate. The distribution would include .3089 to the MNO as well as the debt service. Alternatively, the city council may approve a notice of the proposed tax rate of .4947, which is the no new revenue MNO rate plus the debt rate. A current rate of .4984 would be equal to what was currently in the proposed budget and is 1.6 over the MNO, no new revenue rate. The city council may not approve a final tax rate greater than what is stated in the approved notice of the proposed tax rate. At any time, council may go down, but you may not go over what you currently state in the proposed tax rate.
Counsel, have any questions?
Do y'all have any questions for Ms. Allen?
Exciting time.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Okay, so my understanding of how this works, having been slightly lost last year, but my understanding is better in my second time around. We are approving a tax rate for a, like a public meeting.
Correct.
And then we will approve a final at the actual tax rate.
Correct.
With the budget.
Correct.
And so today's tax rate, whatever number we set today is not the number that we're actually setting for the tax rate, but the number we choose later must be equal to or less than the one we choose today.
Exactly right. We're setting a ceiling today. There is actually a floor or more of a floor. If you notice the numbers that she has up on the screen, the .4994 is what is programmed in your 2024 budget. We tried to keep that as close to the no new revenue rate.
But we were still trying to learn what that no new revenue rate was.
Correct. If you notice, if she goes back a few screens, there's still 159 million under protest.
Awesome. What does that, I mean, I know what that means, but what's that going to do?
Well, obviously, we are very, very, very conservative in our revenue projections, so we don't even take that value into account, or we take a very small percentage of that into account.
Right.
As the roll clears up and as those protests clear up, the budget will make some adjustments, and ultimately, hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, that rate drops a little bit more.
Actually, that's the question, is when will those clear up? You said the next couple of weeks?
They're taking as many as they can, from what I understand. They're, yeah. It's a continual process. They had a lot of protests this year.
Got it. So I'm, you know, I'm not opposed at all to approving what she recommended, but for the final tax rate, I would like it to be at the no new revenue rate.
Got it.
Any further questions? All right, we're being asked to consider to approve this resolution acknowledging the proposed tax rate. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
All right, counsel, moving to 9B, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-25 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, annexing attractive land described as 25.0 acres of land out of the Stephen F. Austin survey abstract number two, located west of Lover's Lane and south of Pecan Park subdivision, east of the Colorado River bend, as shown in exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, adoption, repealer, severability, filing and enforcement, establishing an effective date, and providing for proper notice and meeting, and to include on August 22, 2023, meeting for a second reading. Madam City Manager?
That was a long one, there. Thank you. This is just describing the 25 acres that the city decided to sell a few weeks ago when we came out of session, the council directed staff to proceed with the notice and sale. That sale has occurred. That sale was contingent upon that property being annexed into the city. This is the move to move that into the city limits.
City Manager has laid it out. Do we have questions? Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
So that's going to come in as P2 rule?
It is going to come in as P2 rule. We have some content plans by the developer which will require a change of zoning. For the record, it is not mobile homes.
Okay, and so we'll do the 500-foot notification and all those things?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Crouch, your light was on, but it's not?
I, she answered the question I had was, there was rumor of mobile homes, so I'm glad that you said it's not going to be mobile homes. So, thank you.
Outstanding. All right, no further discussion. Madam Secretary, if you will call?
No, we don't have a motion.
I thought you made a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself, but I have a question here.
They both asked my question, but I think I missed a piece of it. So one was what it was classified as, P2 rural, rural. It's not going to be mobile homes. Did you say what it possibly might be?
Sure, we have a mixed-use development with single-family homes and townhomes. And like commercial.
Thank you.
Meaning like neighborhood commercial boutiques, things like that.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. 9C, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-26 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, annexing attractive land described as 169.773 acres of land out of the Nancy Blakey abstract number 898, located south of State Highway 71 and east of Farmer Market Road 20, as shown in exhibit A, providing for findings of fact, adoption, repealer, severability, filing and enforcement, establishing an effective date, and providing for a proper notice and meeting, and move to include on August 22, 2023, meeting for a second reading. Madam City Manager?
This is also an annexation. As we move toward development, and we have developments in this area that have annexation agreements over a period of time, it is in the city's best interest that we move forward with those annexations pretty quickly. This was part of an agreement that when this property sold back in 2011, we should have had annexation at that time. We're cleaning up, and here we are. It's 169 acres.
City Manager has laid it out. Does anybody have questions for City Manager?
Move to approve. Second.
And we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passed unanimously. Y'all may not remember, we've already considered item 9D. We will move to 9E, consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2023-27 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, calling for an establishing the procedures for November 7, 2023, special election for the purpose of a combined ballot proposition, reducing the economic development sales and use tax, and adopting a street maintenance sales and use tax, providing an effective date, and move to include on August 22, 2023, agenda for second reading. Madam City Secretary?
Good evening, mayor and council. The item before you, as you stated, is to call the special election, which will be held on November 7. There's one correction to the language that you read. Initially, it would have, ordinarily, it would have been come back at the next regular council meeting, but because of the timeframe, we have to bring it back on August 15, which will be a special call meeting, will a budget hearing. So we'll adopt it on second reading if you all choose to do so at the August 15 meeting rather than the August 22 meeting. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Do y'all have any questions for the City Secretary? Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
So on this item, I was concerned about the wording of it. I knew what it was meant to do and what it was supposed to add up to, but you have to parse quite a bit to understand it. And so I asked Allen today if we could add something at the beginning, a prefix, preamble, something that would state that we're not raising taxes. And he came back with some additional language that would add literally just to the beginning of what's already there without increasing the combined, sorry, start over, without increasing the current combined rate of all local sales and use taxes imposed by the city of Bastrop, comma, and then everything that's there, so that it makes it clear by the wording very much upfront that we're not altering the sales tax structure, sorry, the sales tax amount. So, I mean, I'll let anybody else ask questions if you'd like, but otherwise, one time, I'll make the motion and specify that.
Okay, and that's, in the resolution is where you want the wording changed?
Correct. The resolution that was in the packet, I asked Allen about additional wording, and he provided that to me, which I just read out loud.
Okay.
Yes, the wording that Mayor Pro Tim is going to propose in his motion is adding a phrase onto the beginning of the proposition. That's in the election ordinance.
So the language on the ballot, the proposition?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Any further questions for City Secretary? Seeing none, we'll entertain the motion.
Okay, so I motion that we approve, but also add the phrase "without increasing the current combined rate of all local sales and use taxes imposed by the city of Bastrop", comma, at the beginning of it.
Motion has been made, looking for a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Plunkett. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
And I'll forward you this language.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. And the last item since we've removed, item 9G, is 9F, consider action to approve resolution number R-2023-120 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving a contract for election services between Bastrop County, Bastrop County Elections Administrator, and the city of Bastrop for the November 7, 2023, special election for Bastrop, Texas, attached as exhibit A, authorizing the mayor to execute all necessary documents and providing an effective date. Madam City Secretary?
Mayor and council, this item is giving approval to an agreement for the city of Bastrop to enter into an agreement with the county, Bastrop County, and the Bastrop County Elections Administrator to conduct our election, and the cost is $24,091.63. That's the estimate right now, and that's because we will be in a joint election. We will not be in it alone. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Always that cost saving. Any questions for the City Secretary? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. We have a first, and we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, we'll be moving into executive session. In the executive session, items are two. We have 10A, city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551-71 and 551-072 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding real estate matters, including the potential lease of Rodeo Arena at Mepes Park and matters related to Fisherman's Park. Item 10B, city council shall convene and close the executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551-071 and 551-087 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding the Pearl River Development Project, including a potential incentive agreement. It is 9:08, and we are in executive session. It is 9:57, we are out of executive session, back in the open section. No action is to be taken, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. We are adjourned.